All right, good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, January 31st. I'll note for the record that all three commissioners are present in the Nat U Hill Room and will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we would like to offer to our county residents a State of the County Report, which we consider both a review of the past year and some insight into what we're going to be working on in the coming year. So I'll begin by noting that there's a famous bumper sticker, "Think globally, act locally." And there's a reason why that sticker's everywhere. We do this work for you every day as the Board of County Commissioners. Much of what we see in the world or in the national news, housing shortages, food insecurity, environmental concerns, have parallels in Monroe County. We may not be able to solve the world's problems, but we can work together to make life better for the people in Monroe County. And so with that, we want to offer some insight into what we've worked on recently and what we plan to do in the coming months. And while it's very easy to get in the weeds with bureaucratic details, doing that can make it difficult for many folks to really get a sense of what their local government is doing for them day to day, year to year. And with that in mind, we want to try to put these shares, State of the County address into more personal terms, and we'll begin with resiliency.
Monroe County is not immune to climate change. Like much of the U.S., we've been experiencing more extreme weather events, periods of intense rainfall, periods of drought, and so on. We're developing a long-term plan to help Monroe County and all of its residents and its businesses be more resilient in the face of climate change. Working on this climate resiliency plan with the County Environmental Commission has been a collaborative effort. For instance, we've partnered with the Indiana University's Environmental Resiliency Institute to assess our future risks and identify actions we can take to mitigate those risks. While seven Indiana cities are participating, Monroe is the only entire county which is involved with the Environmental Resiliency Institute at this time. Monroe County government also is hosting a McKinney Climate Fellow, that's an IU undergrad or grad student with expertise in the area of climate change, sustainability, and resilience planning, who will help to create a plan for Monroe County for climate resilience. The Climate Resiliency Blue Ribbon Committee is another entity working in concert to oversee the progress of our climate resiliency plan. My fellow commissioners and I appointed its members, and the committee has sponsored two day-long work sessions. The aim of these sessions was first to identify areas of vulnerability in Monroe County, and a second session to brainstorm about possible solutions. The committee will then work with the McKinney Climate Fellow to produce the first draft of the plan. Sometime this spring, we hope to have a plan finished for the commissioners to approve, and which will allow us to begin implementing it.
Like much of the country, we have issues, we have residents who face substance use disorder issues. And so I'd like to share with you some of the things that we've been doing. Monroe County has a Substance Use Disorder Awareness Commission. I think it's been in existence since 2017. In the past, the commission was known as the opioid commission, hosted, they hosted conferences. Of course, the COVID pandemic put a halt to some of that, and we switched to sponsoring lunch and learn programs. This past year, we had three of those, I believe it was. And we are currently planning a conference for this September, which will be titled Paths to Recovery, and it will be honoring the life of Greg May, who did so much within our community to help folks. Monroe County has continued its authorization of a syringe service program. We're one of only eight counties in the whole state that does this type of program. Syringe services programs are evidence-based and are there to reduce the risk of other health problems such as hepatitis C and HIV. And those are things that can occur when there's needle sharing and using unhygienic needles. Working with the Health Department and the Indiana Recovery Alliance, Monroe County received an additional $536,000 as part of a special opioid settlement grant from the state to help the Indiana Recovery Alliance buy a permanent home, purchase a mobile harm reduction vehicle, and also so that we could purchase additional harm reduction supplies. This money is partially being matched by some of the opioid settlement money which Monroe County has received through the national efforts at opioid settlement monies and suits. The, we have contracted with the Indiana Recovery Alliance to distribute syringes and other harm reduction supplies. Looking forward into this coming year, we have formed a working group to make recommendations to the county council as to how to use other parts of the county's opioid settlement funds to help those who are impacted by illicit drug use. And we are hoping to join with the city of Bloomington because they also have received money but do not have a health department of their own. We'll talk more about this later, but we're looking to bring in an IRX program, and so we'll need to have at least one certified recovery community organization here, or an RCO. So one of the recommendations that the working group will be making to the county council in the near future is to help fund the RCO and the training that their staff might need. And that brings us to a discussion of the jail, the justice center, the construction of a new jail. As you know, we've continued to support the sheriff's ongoing efforts to repair the facility as needed, plumbing, electrical roof, Sallyport, elevator. And we are awaiting a report from RQAW, which is going to offer concrete information on, and determination on feasibility of repairs. Now, this is a required step, but consultants have advised us that the multi-floor jail is problematic, lacks space for programming, and repairs will not be able to address this. But we will continue to support repairs being made on the facility on an as-needed basis. After we finalized the contract with DLZ to assist us with site selection, design, and initial phases of the project, we've continued to explore potential sites, especially, I think, one of, one important site of note that has, while a site has not been selected, it's important to note that when the Thompson property was discussed last, this past year, we did hold two different listening sessions in the neighborhood, and we really appreciated all those residents who came out and shared their perspectives. Meanwhile, we're awaiting some final information after, once we've received the, since we have now received the environmental geotechnical studies. And after we toured jail facilities in Indiana and Kentucky in previous years, we toured jail facilities in Arizona at the beginning of 2023. We went to Jefferson County, Indiana, and we went to Columbus, Ohio, Franklin County, Ohio. And we learned a great deal from staff and even from inmates regarding space design and programming. And one of the important things we learned was about the benefits of direct supervision. And it was interesting because we were brought into a pod, and we were speaking with inmates. They have a direct supervision model. And we left that pod, and we were told after we left that many of those men were on trial for murder. You would have no idea. We were not afraid. We were not scared. We learned a lot along the way. And so we are eager to put all that experience to good use as we move forward with the project.
So as part of the things related to the jail, we had had a report, well, we worked for several years with consultants, and received a report back. And after that, we created the Community Justice Response Committee, which operated at the end of 2022 and the beginning of 2023. We, as we listened, we realized that there were other things that we had to be pulling in at that time. So we, we decided to move forward on other fronts. As part of that, and I think Ms. Purdy played a big role, and the commissioners, the sheriff, part of the jail staff, and two county council members, and Ms. Purdy and others on our staff participated in a three-day training program sponsored by the National Institute of Corrections. It's called the Planning and Opening New Institutions. This training helped bring additional focus to our planning efforts. And as we move forward on the property, as Commissioner Thomas said, we held two public meetings. And now that the sheriff has hired Corey Grass as the jail transition director, we hope to, again, in a different format, re-engage with that community. The process of selecting a site, designing and building a new jail and justice center is slow, deliberative, for a reason. It will ensure, we hope, that we hear from the stakeholders, department heads, elected officials, and especially, especially, the broader Monroe County community. The justice campus needs that we address currently will hopefully meet the needs of the residents for decades to come. This is a very weighty kind of thing. But with the support of Sheriff Marte, we are also working with Jerry, Jamie Whitaker of Mental Health America of Indiana to bring an integrated reentry and correctional support program to Monroe County. This will require us, as I said earlier, to have a certified recovery community organization, something that we are currently working with a local nonprofit to create. And sort of segueing then into one of the things that we have locally also is, we have a high-tech crimes unit that I want to congratulate the prosecutor's office on. This is to connect with improved safety for residents across our nation. This was, across our region, sorry. This was first initiated in 2022. It's a partnership between the prosecutor and the Indiana University Police Department to collect, analyze, and present data to assist with the prosecution of high-tech crimes in an eight-county region, including Monroe County. This is funded by a grant from the Indiana Prosecuting Attorneys Council. Additional funding was secured again in 2023 to allow us to move forward this year. With all the phishing, scamming, the use of stolen credit cards and other high-tech crimes on the rise, this becomes more and more important to protect the residents of Monroe County. The grant actually pays for personnel, computers, and software. And I have to say, I'm grateful because people tried to scam me in terms of, through payroll here at the county. So I do appreciate what's going on. Just a few other quick other accomplishments over the past year. We merged our Human Rights Commission with the city of Bloomington's Human Rights Commission, so that it's just one unit that anyone has to go to. We approved a time to, we're working with the clerk and the election board to investigate the use of vote centers here in the county. Each election cycle, people end up at the wrong center or precinct location to vote, and they get there five minutes before the voting closes, and their vote won't count. Using vote centers, if you register to vote within Monroe County, you can vote at any of the locations that are available to you. And then we've also seen software improvements, especially with the overlays through our GIS department, that allows for all kinds of new exploratory things to be done here. So I want to congratulate everybody involved in that.
Another problem that the county has faced over the past few years is that the United States Forest Service developed a vegetation management project plan for the Houston South portion of the Hoosier National Forest. The project called for clearcutting 401 acres, logging of approximately 4,000 acres, herbicide application to 2,000 acres, and prescribed burning of 13,500 acres. Notwithstanding the fact that some of the foregoing activities would take place on highly erodible, steep slopes within the Lake Monroe watershed, the United States Forest Service prepared an environmental assessment document for the project, which concluded that the project would have no significant impact on the environment, and thus that a more comprehensive environmental impact statement need not be prepared for the project. In May of 2020, Monroe County, along with the Indiana Forest Alliance, the Hoosier Environmental Council, and other interested parties, filed a lawsuit against the United States Forest Service. Lake Monroe is the sole drinking source of water for 120,000 people in southern Indiana, and already suffers from a degraded quality due to sedimentation and algal blooms. The county, along with the friends of Lake Monroe and the Indiana Forest Alliance and the Hoosier Environmental Council, will continue to monitor this matter and will respond as necessary to ensure that Lake Monroe is protected.
And along the lines of public health issues, as our drinking water, protecting our drinking water supply is, I just want to note that a few years back, the Community Justice and Mediation Center in Monroe County received a grant to study how to encourage people whose voices are less powerful to be heard in government specifically regarding public health, environment, physical, and mental health. And public health really encompasses so many aspects of our day-to-day life. It's related to access to quality food, a sense of belonging, access to medical care, treatment of facilities, et cetera. I've been proud to be part of the steering committee from the very beginning of this project a few years back. And we've held a number of community meetings to ascertain the community's interests and priorities for public health. And along the way, we learned a great deal about public engagement and how to continue the conversation with residents of the county, those who are marginalized and don't have, or feel they don't have, a voice in government. That group is now called the Monroe County Health Equity Council, and we will continue our work on that council and hopefully move toward creating a health and all policy for county government as we consider all aspects of public health, as we make decisions and enact policies.
Moving on to money. Each year, as the county council gets ready to decide upon its budget for the coming year, the Board of Commissioners is asked to come forward and make a recommendation regarding salaries. And we feel it is incumbent upon us to ensure that the people that work for Monroe County are treated equitably and fairly. So this past year, the county commissioners met before the council, asking for an eight-and-a-half percent salary raise. And along with that, we provided supporting rationale. County employees, to their credit, came out and supported this very strongly. It was a joy to see some of them. And so this year, for 2024, county councils provided employees with the requested eight-and-a-half percent increase and boosted the salaries of the lowest-paid employees by an additional 55 cents an hour. And I want to commend them for doing that. Also, this, in 2022, the Indiana General Assembly, and this kind of goes along with sort of income and, and supporting our staff, 2022, we know that the Indiana General Assembly terminated the licensure of abortion clinics in Indiana. And with that, Monroe County began offering up to $400 in travel expenses to anyone covered by our health insurance who was seeking an abortion because the need to travel out of state.
It's not every day that people actually clap after we pass an ordinance, but that's just what happened in 2023, when we created the Capital Improvement Board. As you may recall, that board is responsible for leading the Monroe County Convention Center Expansion Project. That expansion is critically important to us and our colleagues on the Monroe County Council, as well as to those with the city of Bloomington, and entities including the Chamber of Commerce and the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. Of course, these past years were full of fits and starts, thanks in part to COVID-19. Fortunately, we are back on track and very excited to have a full complement of members in place. They began meeting in October and are ultimately responsible for selecting the Convention Center Expansion Site and site planning components, hiring architects, and taking care of many other essential details. It is a big job that the CIB members have taken on, and we want to thank them for their work so far. They include CIB President John Weigart, Vice President Doug Bruce, Secretary Joyce Polling, Treasurer Eric Spoonmore, and members Mick Rineisen, Adam D. Thies, and Jim Silverstein. We are committed to supporting you in this important work in 2024. For our part, this means collaborating with city officials on the memorandum of understanding needed to cover several key details. We're excited to take these next steps and keep Monroe County, the Monroe County Convention Center Expansion Project moving forward.
And another project that we have continued to work on, especially on the Plan Commission, which will come, and it will come before the Board of Commissioners, is the County Development Ordinance. And it has been many years in the making, and much like building a new jail and justice complex, these things are slow and deliberative processes for a reason. And it's because we are focused on bringing the public's perspective into the ordinance. And so, working with consultants, these new planning and zoning ordinances are moving forward. And there are a number of clear, clear benefits for the community. The language is clarified and simplified. There are graphic representations of requirements. So when someone says side yard setback, what does that look like? What is a side yard? There are fewer zones proposed at this moment overall. And so with greater clarity and flexibility for residents and businesses, this is a result of community engagement. And we've had a great deal of it, and extensively throughout this project, we've had meetings outdoors over the summers. We are going to have another set of public meetings to accept comment. And then after that, there will be public hearings, both held by the Plan Commission and another set of public hearings held by the Board of Commissioners, before a vote is taken on the County Development Ordinance. And huge thank you to the planning staff, members of the community who serve on the Plan Commission, and all of those who have taken the time to provide input. We do hope to have this project completed by the end of 2024. If there are a lot of comments or some significant changes that are going to be made, that may push the CDO approval into 2025. So go to monroeCDO.com for more information and to provide input and to look at where we're at right now.
Over the past few years, the county has bought parcels of land in North Park, situated between Elletsville and Bloomington. This is a superfund site that has been cleaned up for public use. We acquired it to make sure the land would not be used inappropriately. It is our intention to turn it into a park called Quarry in the Uplands. We hope to make it an indoor and eventual, an outdoor and eventually indoor park to celebrate Monroe County's limestone heritage. We also hope to include signage that will address the history of PCBs in our county. This property contains a number of quarries, an abundance of green space, and is conveniently located on State Road 46 by I-69, making it a good tourist destination. In 2024, we plan to convene a group of interested citizens to initiate community feedback on what amenities are desired for the park and begin the first stages of development. So if you have any interest in helping to bring this park about, please be in touch with us when we are actually creating this group of people.
And we do want to thank Ms. Ridge and the Highway Department Public Works for all of the efforts. And kudos on 55 miles repaved in 2023. That is the most that Ms. Ridge could find in her history books at the Highway Department. There were a sidewalk and drainage improvements along with that, of course. Sample Road, which originated in 2014, both the east and west, were completed. The Curry-Woodyard Smith Roundabout was completed. That project started in 2018. I want to take a moment to thank again the residents around Fullerton Pike. When we initially began this project years ago, because of I-69 and indots plans, we worked with our residents as Fullerton was being designed, and we heard their concerns, and the road was narrowed significantly in its design as a result. And those, many of those folks who were the most involved have stayed involved, and they helped design the roundabout. And that was the county's first roundabout. And it's an amazing roundabout, so we thank them for continuing to stay engaged and appreciate them. The Bicentennial Pathway Project is completed, getting completed, and Liberty Drive, Cars from Greenway Trail Extension is hopefully going to be completed this year as well. Once again, since 2016, Community Crossings money has been awarded to Monroe County, and that's because we have Ms. Ridge and an amazing Highway Department. Also, using ARPA funding, brine equipment was installed. People around the county have noticed the brine trucks before an ice event or a snow event, and they're doing the work. And this is much better for the environment, and it certainly is a great safety feature for Monroe County residents. Fullerton Pike Phase 3 is going, hopefully, to begin the construction phase in 2024. The Vernal Pike Connector Road also will be on Ms. Ridge's agenda for 2024. There's a lot coming up, and some pedestrian crossing improvements as well for 2024. And speaking of all things transit, transportation, the Rural Transit Service will continue for residents of Monroe County. The Rural Transit was notified in 2023 that it could no longer The Rural Transit was notified in 2023 that it could no longer serve the more densely populated areas of the county outside of the city. We utilized ARPA money to purchase electric buses for Rural Transit, and as a result of that, Rural Transit created a secondary service outside of their normal service to continue to provide rides for residents in Ellisville and outside the city of Bloomington in the more densely populated areas. And the cost is being shared between the county and Ellisville. We're going to be billed based on actual service. And while the county committed to providing funding for the entire year, also using ARPA funds, the Ellisville Town Council unfortunately only agreed to fund the service for three months. I really appreciate the work of Chris Myers at Rural Transit for developing the plan. They came in with a cost less than Bloomington Transit for that service, and what's great for the residents is it's seamless. They're calling the same number, they're, the same drivers, the same buses are showing up, and it's really evidence of the collaboration that we utilize to serve the residents of Monroe County. So this coming year, we are going to work with our partners in the city, in the town of Ellisville, at Rural Transit, of course, to determine how we get past March, and March is coming quick. So we need to make sure we complete the year, and then we need to talk about that long-term plan. And we attended a transit summit last week, and some ideas were floated, and I think that's a good start. And I've already mentioned a few ARPA projects, but we had more than $24 million allocated to Monroe County for once-in-a-lifetime projects. These projects for the American Rescue Plan Act will have a lasting positive impact on our county. It addresses the needs of county residents, and these projects were developed with the help of county departments, the council, community stakeholders, and residents. There's some ways to think about this funding. Four and a half million dollars for housing, $650,000 for food, more than 1.2 million toward childcare, and infrastructure improvements, $11.8 million. We are all going to benefit from these programs.
So there's still a bit more to do. In 2024, we will work with the council as we finalize the remaining ARPA projects. We, of course, also have had, been working with our community foundation and United Way to have the Heading Home Project, which is helping right now to ensure that our unhoused veterans find a place. We hope to work on infrastructure at Osage Place, which is one Habitat for Humanity project. We have our rural housing repair project, which would help keep moderate and low-income county residents in their homes. We have already given money to Pantry 279, to the People's Market for Food Boxes, to Hoosier Hills Food Bank for a new truck and additional food. We have helped to fund a new location facility for Community Kitchen Express at Crescent Park, and we've also been out personally and helped with the food distribution at Hoosier Hills Food Bank and Pantry, Pantry 279, along with also volunteering at the Hoosier Hills Food Bank Book Fair. So it's a lot. Of course, with our own county of employees, the people that here that make things happen, we use some ARPA money for retention bonuses and for incentivizing people to get their COVID vaccines. With our childcare, we've done pre-K Ready Program. They, we provided the final bit of funding for the Summit Hill Early Learning Center, which will provide childcare for infants and toddlers, as well as providing three low-cost apartments for, onsite for people. We help New Hope for Families with their childcare and also Smart Start Program through the community foundations. In terms of other projects, we've connected with, that are connected to public health and the safety and well-being in our community. We're talking with Centerstone about supporting some of the residential projects, and we have, are working with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America to provide gun locks and gun safes, these are safes that would go into somebody's vehicle, to hopefully keep our community safer.
We have also, as has already been mentioned, instigated a number of projects, many of which are tied to climate resiliency, environmental stewardship, and public health. The Bicentennial Pathway, which is nearing completion. We have instituted, as has been mentioned, a brine system for icy road management that is much more environmentally acceptable than the application of salt. We bought the Monroe County Fire Protection District four new, four ambulances to help decrease response times, and we're initiating work on an airport drainage plan. We have also brought Wi-Fi to the fairground and Cars Farm Park, and at Cars Farm Park, two fields will be outfitted with artificial turf, and there will be lighting and drainage improvements. One of the things I'm most excited about is our solar project. This will provide for installation of solar panels for many of the county's buildings and properties. We have bought Rural Transit five buses, and as you heard, will be paying for the transit service throughout 2024. A particularly important project that we will be working on developing in 2024 is one to help people with failing septics. We hope this will help clean up our groundwater. And as you've heard over the past couple of years, six subdivisions have been paved and received drainage improvements.
And we're really proud to have been invited to a Building Communities event at the White House, and we are actually going to be going there tomorrow for a meeting to share some of the things that we've been able to accomplish in Monroe County and utilizing the American Rescue Plan Act funding. And so these are just some of the many initiatives. It's been a busy year. It makes me tired to hear all of that. Many initiatives that we pursued over the last year to serve all of the residents of Monroe County, to reduce recidivism, to address the health and especially the mental health of our community members, to enhance infrastructure, and to improve housing, childcare, and the availability of food. We have more work to do, and we are looking forward to it. None of us works alone, and we are optimistic about strengthening our relationship with our colleagues in the city. We appreciate everyone in county government, elected officials, department heads, staff, community stakeholders, and all of the members of the public who have provided valuable input and lent their expertise to Monroe County government. Anything else my colleagues wish to add to the report?
Well, there's, one of the things that you mentioned about us going out to the White House, this is a group being brought in from Indiana and Illinois, and we had sort of a pre-meeting discussion on Monday. From what I could tell, we are the only county commissioners across the state who will be attending this event. So it's a big deal.
All right. Anything else? With that, I appreciate everyone's attention today, and we did want to share with you some of the things that we've done and our plans for 2024, and we do invite the public to join us during our office hours or to contact us at Commissioner's Office at CO.munro.in.us if they have any comments or questions. But our next item is the proclamation.
Yes, this is a proclamation for Black History Month. Whereas historian and scholar Carter G. Woodson founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History and created the precursor to Black History Month. And Carter G. Woodson noted that the contributions of African-Americans were, quote, "overlooked, ignored, and even suppressed by the writers of history, textbooks, and the teachers who use them," unquote. And we acknowledge and strenuously oppose continued attempts throughout parts of modern-day America to suppress the teaching of the full history of the United States, to ban famous works of literature, and to ignore how people of color are overrepresented in our prisons and jails. African-Americans have made and continue to make significant contributions to American life, American history, and American culture. We come together to recognize Black History Month and this year's theme, African-Americans and the Arts, which is intended to highlight African-Americans' significant contributions to the visual and performing arts, literature, fashion, folklore, language, film, music, architecture, culinary, and other forms of cultural expression. And as we say every week in our opening statement, we will fight and resist discrimination and harmful policies, no matter their source. Now, therefore, we, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month.
Thank you so much. All right. We will now move on to department updates. Ms. Kelly?
Good morning.
Morning.
Just a few updates for you. Influenza levels are still at moderate levels across the state. We have seen decreases in COVID cases in wastewater concentrations and emergency room visits. Skunk rabies have been confirmed in Clark County. There is currently no known threat within Monroe County, but we do recommend ensuring that pets are up to date with rabies vaccination. Has COVID RSV for those 60 and older and flu vaccines available. You can call 812-353-3244.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Gibson?
I just want to thank Ms. Kelly for continuously providing updates and, and working with us so closely and so well.
Very helpful. Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Thank you so much. Sadly, with the politicization of science that vaccinations for pets have fallen greatly across the country, so I'm glad you raised that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Ms. Miller from Soil and Water Conservation District. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I want to thank you for your dedication to conservation in Monroe County of our natural resources. That's kind of our big focus. What we do is try to conserve soil and water, and we appreciate your dedication to that. I just wanted to come along and start the year off and give you some updates of what we've done, where we're headed, and what's new for 2024 for Monroe County Soil and Water. On January 9th, we had the privilege, myself, our district resource specialist, Erica Eason, and three of the board's supervisors, to attend an event at the Indiana State House in support of Clean Water Indiana. That's a funding source that supports Soil and Water Conservation Districts across the state of Indiana. And it was a new thing this year to go to the State House with several hundred other conservation-minded folks to try to get the legislators to understand the importance of supporting their constituents back home. So that was a neat experience to go and do that. We are celebrating our 80th year. Monroe County Soil and Water has been in existence for 80 years in this county, and that's, that's a big deal when you think about how long the, the landowners have strove to conserve their soil and protect their water. Obviously, it started predominantly in the agricultural sector, and over the years has transferred into all sectors of the, of the way. We will be celebrating on March 23rd at Ivy Tech Bloomington Shreve Hall. We have a guest speaker, Hunter Smith. Some of you might recognize that name. He was a former punter for the NFL Colts, and he owns a regenerative specialty crop farm in Zionsville, and he speaks on that journey, and it's pretty impressive to hear him speak. So we're excited about that. Hope to get good attendance and hope that, you know, we'll just have a good time. We've invited several of our partners back to table again, most of them, you know, Friends of Lake Monroe, Sycamore Land Trust, those sorts of folks. In September of '23, I had the honor of celebrating 20 years as a Monroe County government employee. A lot of things have changed in 20 years. When I first started, my job was very basic and very administrative, and it has evolved to a place doing things I didn't ever think I would do, such as HR and payroll and taxes and, but I've also watched conservation bloom and grow. And it's exciting because Monroe County often sets the bar for other districts around the state. So I'm involved at the state level with district employees, and it's really impressive and a little bit braggy, I guess. My board chair and I have both heard multiple times in the last year and a half how that Monroe County is doing something because, across the state, we're being watched for what we're doing. That led us to look into the last few years as we prepare for our 80th celebration. I didn't know this until I got to figuring this up. I told Angie a little while back. Since 2013, Soil and Water, in conjunction with our state partners and our federal partners, have brought in $6,242 to landowners in Monroe County to work for conservation. So those private landowners, one or two public projects, but usually directly with private landowners, to improve their property, to protect the soil and the water leaving their land. That's, that's a lot more than I thought. That also generates a little bit of revenue because with each one of those, those people are taxed on that money, which is so weird, but, but that comes back in as personal income back into the county as well. So with that, the last thing I will share is that we have launched a new newsletter. It was the board's goal to find a way to celebrate conservation, get conservation news, not just of ours, but of our partners, out into the hands of the public. We are trying to find a way to creatively fund the source that we use to do this, but right now, we're, we're figuring out a few things as we go, and we, we hope to continue to build on this. If you've not got our newsletter and you want to be part of it, just simply go to our website and sign up. We will be trying to put that out on the last Friday of every month. That's our goal. And if anybody has information they want to put in it, we would love to have it. We will be highlighting watershed work because we have just entered into a new contract with IDEM for rewriting the Bean Blossom Watershed Plan, which was originally written in 2005 by AGC. And then in 2013, Soil and Water actually got a 319 grant to implement projects in that watershed. Now it's outdated enough that IDEM wanted it rewritten, so we've hired a consultant, and we will work with Erica. She's currently going through the Indiana Watershed Leadership Program, which I did a few years back. So those are just a few of the things that we have done and we are doing, and I just wanted to keep you guys kind of in that loop. Here's invitations for all three of you to our annual meeting, so we would love to have you, and that's it unless you have questions.
Thank you so much for the update. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Well, thank you so much. The work you do is really important and appreciated, especially in the agricultural community.
Commissioner Gibson?
Well, two things. What time on March 23rd will the event start out at Ivy Tech? Do you know?
Well, we're going to open the doors at 8:00. I know. When the board decided, we've done a breakfast for several years, and we had talked about doing a lunch this year, but then that's going to conflict with the farmer's market, so we were trying to figure out how to do it so people could still get to the market. They said, no, let's open the doors at 8:00 and serve breakfast at 9:00. I went, okay. So 8:00, we're going to open the doors at 8:00. One world will be catering our breakfast. One world will be catering our breakfast at 9:00. Yeah, and we'll have our tableers will be set up.
I also wanted to thank you for the information you provided about how there's building impacts our waterways as we try to fight against House Bill 1108, which increases where houses and other structures can be built on different slopes. They're increasing the slope, which has the potential to really increase the amount of debris and silt that goes into our waterways. And so I really appreciate you weighing in and giving us additional information.
I might just say really quickly on that, it was actually interesting how I found out and then how it all came about, but it's actually given me the opportunity to share with some other Soil and Water District folks in other counties who didn't realize this bill existed, and it's going to impact them as well. Erosion is a big concern. Sediment is our number one pollutant by volume in Indiana waters, so it's an awareness that Monroe County has taken to other counties that way, so.
Appreciate that. Well, and of course, with that erosion, you lose topsoil, which is critical for our farming.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, if you look in the newsletter, Joe Pedan's dad made a very profound statement in 1960 about topsoil loss, so.
Yeah, we appreciate you coming in, and it's Soil and Water Conservation District works alongside and, but also provides different services than our stormwater board does, so that's an important thing to note for the public. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other departments that wish to offer an update? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill. Okay. With that, we will move on to public comments. Public comment period is designed for commenters on items that are not on our agenda. Please limit your remarks to three minutes per person, and please note whether or not you are a Monroe County resident. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, distinguished staff. This is Christopher Remge from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce, and I, you know, as we head into 2024, I think we want to realize the chamber is going to be a resource and a partner with both this body and county government as a whole. We have a lot of important issues, as the State of the County address noted. And I think one of the things that I think giving your leadership on the convention center and the ARPA funding, which I always thought it was a very transparent process, it brought in a lot of the needs that a lot of us residents were not familiar with, and it's great that you're getting acknowledged for that. In a vacuum, it seemed like great, but it's when it's sort of acknowledged on that federal level, going to the White House, I just want to make a note of that. But as we face these issues, and one of the things that Commissioner Thomas mentioned is the word collaboration, and I think when you look at the new justice center that needs to be built, the programs involved, working with Sheriff Marte and the fine leadership he's done over at the jail, if we look at the CDO and the county zoning, if we look at, you know, climate resiliency, we need collaboration with your peers at the fiscal side of the council and then also the city. And I think when we have that and we come in as good stewards of tax dollars with the entire community as a whole in mind, that we can come to these decisions. I think transit is one of these areas where I've been very encouraged with the collaboration with Rural Transit BT in Ellisville, that we can get seamless transit options to individuals who are going to very necessary appointments. But it's also in transit going to take, sort of moving that outward to the urban ring here, and we establish ourselves not just as Monroe County residents, Ellisville, Bloomington, but kind of coming together, and I think transit is going to be a vehicle for that. And I think if we look at sort of where we're going to grow, it's going to take working with our city peers on moving and getting sewer into those areas and making sure that we are growing responsibly. And I think we're on a pathway to do that. I thank you for your time today. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to offer a public comment on an item not on our agenda? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room, please. Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, please.
Move approval of minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting on January 24th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, corrections, edits?
I didn't see any.
I didn't either. Awesome. All those in favor of approving the minutes for January 24th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
We have approval of claims docket accounts payable January 31st, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Gregory, tell us all about it, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. The accounts payable claims docket for January 31st, 2024 totals $3,821,594.19. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments, and I do want to clarify that we did have a question from Commissioner Githens regarding a claim. That claim has since been voided, and the total I gave you reflects that void.
Thank you so much. Any comments, questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
I just want to thank the Auditor's Office for responding so quickly. We only get these claims to look at usually, sometimes it's on Tuesday even. I really appreciate the speed with which you're willing to work with us.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket accounts payable January 31st, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 3-0. I will note for the record, we have received the report from the clerk dated December 2023, and hot off the press, we have the report from Ways and Measures, December 16th, 2023 to January 15th, 2024. Always interesting to read that. It was a bit of a slow month for them, so that's interesting. All right, got other work done. Okay, with that, we will move on to new business.
I move approval of a stop grant agreement for 2023, 2024. Fund name, stop grant. Fund number, 8123, in an amount of $117,553.30.
Second.
And while Groundhog Day is Friday, I do want to note that we've seen this before. Ms. Hamlin, would you offer some insight? Thank you.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. This is a request for approval and signature of the grant agreement between the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute for Stop Grant Funding to cover dates 10/1 of '23 through 9/30 of '24. The stop grant funds 50% of the salary FICA and PERF for a sex crime deputy prosecuting attorney and a domestic violence deputy prosecuting attorney. These two attorneys, in conjunction with the sex crime and domestic violence victim assistants and a part-time investigative assistant, make up the special victims unit within our office at the prosecutor's office. The goal of the SVU is to more efficiently focus resources, training, and staff on crimes of violence against women. And I believe we are in a position to have this signed today.
I believe we are too, and patience is a virtue.
But I like seeing Ms. Hamlin.
I know, it's great to have you. We're used to having you here. So comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No, it's nice to finally see you.
Commissioner Jones?
This is an important grant, and I'm glad that we will be signing it after a number of attempts.
Thank you for your patience.
Really, really important work to protect Monroe County residents, and I'm so grateful that the officers received, prosecutor's offices received the stop grant again, 2023, 2024. Any public comments on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the stop grant agreement for 2023, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and Ms. Hamlin's light's back on, and we're all good. And we've finally approved it! Hurrah! Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your patience.
And yours. Okay, next item, please.
Move approval of State of Homeland Security Program for Civil Unrest Tabletop Training. Fund name, National Priority COM. Fund number, 8178, in an amount of $18,100.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I will note that's a grant amount of $18,100. Yep, sorry. And Mr. Baker's joining us. Tell us all about it, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. So the department was recently awarded a grant for the State Homeland Security Program that focuses on community preparedness against terrorism. The grant award is for $18,100, and earlier in 2023, the Emergency Management Department started to draft a civil unrest plan for the county, and this plan is to help the county prepare for civil unrest events and terrorism. These grant funds will help fund a homeland security exercise evaluation program compliant tabletop exercise in early 2025. The planning for the exercise and the exercise will be facilitated by a private emergency management consulting forum called Our Clear Emergency Management Group. This group has had experience over the past several years conducting exercises with other emergency management groups. We are happy to have this going.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I just want to thank the Emergency Management Department. They have truly worked hard at trying to keep our community as safe as possible, and this is another initiative that I'm sure will help with that.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes, and they do this with two people on their staff. But also, I wanted to point out that the grant award, the $18,100, I was in touch with Mr. Baker about this. $18,000 of that goes to the All Clear Emergency Management Group, and he informed me that $100 is set aside for supplies.
Right, excellent. Thank you so much. Any public comment on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the State of Homeland Security Program for Civil Unrest Tabletop Training signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good work getting the grant.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-06, Surplus Property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have Mr. Kreider joining us.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Facilities and Fleet. This request is to approve the inventory surplus and retirement from the following departments. Area 10, Monroe County Rural Transit, Monroe County Fleet, Monroe County Prosecutor's Office, Youth Services Bureau of Monroe County. The items include 14 rural transit buses that have either been totaled or have met the end of their service life and have been retired and then replaced. Those are sold at auction. Five Monroe County Fleet Department vehicles, two from the sheriff's office, one totaled in an accident, and then a truck that's been replaced with new. This vehicle will be donated to Health Net. Two from the sheriff's reserve office, both totaled in an accident. A bus from the Youth Services Bureau that's been replaced with new. It will be sold at auction. Five office chairs from the prosecutor's office that are in poor condition. They will be disposed of by maintenance. And three couches, three love seats, and forearm chairs from the Youth Services Bureau that will be replaced with new. This furniture will be donated to St. Vincent de Paul.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I kind of gasped when I saw one or two of the pictures from the vehicles that have been in accidents, so I hope everybody was okay.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
But I also want to thank everybody for working with us to get a new vehicle for Health Net.
Yeah, I think that's a great thing, and that goes along with something I wanted to ask about, which is if the Youth Service Bureau passenger vehicle, passenger van, as it were, is in any kind of operating condition, if, before we go to auction, if we could see if there's someone locally who wants it. 501(c)(3) social service, even parks, anything like that, please make that happen.
I will check, but I have a feeling our mechanic will say no.
It's not operable. I had a feeling it wasn't operable either, and because I know we waited so long to get that, that new one had been ordered for, had an order for so long because of, you know, supply chain stuff, so, okay, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Come to the podium in the Nat U Hill room or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-06, Surplus Property signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, please.
Move approval of MPI Solar LLC for Monroe County Solar Expansion. Fund names, ARPA and 2021 Geo Bond. Fund numbers, 8950 and 4814, in an amount of $1,369,000.
We have a motion.
Oh, second. I'm sorry.
She is...
I was waiting to hear about it.
Yeah.
It's exciting.
I don't blame you. This is, you know, thank you. Please tell us about it.
As you mentioned in your State of the County address, we've been busy working on a plan to expand our solar capabilities at a variety of county locations. We sent out a request for proposals. We did a site visit, multiple vendors came, we toured, and Man Plumbing MPI Solar was the lone respondent, and we've been working with them on building a contract. This request is to accept the proposal submitted by MPI Solar LLC in the amount of $1,369,000 to install solar photovoltaic generating systems and storage equipment at the following Monroe County facilities. The Community Corrections Building at 405 West 7th, $275,000. The Health Building at 119 West 7th Street, $115,000. The Monroe County Employee Parking Garage, 312 North Morton Street, $108,500. The Monroe County Government Center at North Showers, 501 North Morton Street, $496,500. The Monroe County Highway Garage at 5900 South Curry Foster Drive, $319,000. The Youth Services Bureau of Monroe County at 615 South Adams Street in the amount of $55,000.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, well, obviously, I'm so excited about this, I'm kind of forgetting my role here.
We'll remind you.
This really is a wonderful thing to have happening now. Can you give us maybe an approximate of how much money this will actually save the county in the end?
That's probably in some documents we have. I'll have to go back to that, but I can definitely find that information for you.
Yeah, it seems to me I saw it somewhere.
I did too.
But I'd forgotten just what it was.
I think what we're doing out at the county government or at the highway garage, there were two options, and so it made a difference in terms of what would be saved out there. I would like to point out, too, that what's going on in the Showers Building includes the canopy for the vehicles. It's not just the solar panels. Those will be mounted on top of canopies, which should also protect our vehicles from weather even more, and that we're putting in the charging stations out there and at Youth Services Bureau. I'm really excited. But when we talked about going out to DC, they also want to hear about what we are going to do with the Inflation Reduction Act, and this is part of one of the ways that we are hoping to tap into that additional money to save the county taxpayers even more.
Right, yeah, so there are charging additional chargers for electric vehicles for, yeah, YSB, our employee parking garage, because we are actually running low on those, which is kind of a nice problem to have, and at Showers Building at the Monroe County Government Center. And there are also... And there are also a number of battery systems included in this for, to provide backup in case of a power outage. It's a, it's a much better way to go. And what we're hoping to do with, at the highway garage is once all of these things are installed, there's supposed to be a return due to the Infrastructure Inflation Reduction Act. And with that, we can actually do another phase, hopefully, at the highway garage, which would be really tall canopies for our highway dump trucks because they need to be plugged in in the winter and our plow trucks. And they would need, they would be covered, which would also help lead them to a longer life. And what we're hoping is that our next phase is going to focus on providing a new fleet, moving into our new fleet, which will be electric and electric gas hybrid, which will also save taxpayer money. This is all going to save taxpayer money. It's going to remove tons of carbon from the environment over thirty years. It is, it is a win-win-win-win for all of us. So really appreciate your work on this. And MPI Solar was great on the tour that we did and the inspections. They had some really very creative ideas, and it really helped us along. So thank you for that.
They've been very helpful.
Yeah, and let's go ahead and see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of the agreement with MPI Solar LLC for Monroe County Solar Expansion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next item.
Move approval of the Harold Fish, Inc., HVAC Automated Control Software Replacement Agreement. Fund name: Cumulative Capital. Fund number: 1138 in an amount of thirty-six thousand eight hundred ninety dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Kreider?
Commissioners, we recently had issues with our current software helios communicating with the automated devices on the HVAC system at the, the Justice Center. And we, the, we found that the server is, is basically on its last leg. It needs to be replaced, and a new server means new software. This request is to approve the proposal submitted by HFI in the amount of thirty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars to upgrade the existing HVAC automated control software and necessary hardware to Honeywell Web Supervisor. This work is considered Phase One in a project that will begin at Airhandler 1 and will extend to multiple pieces of equipment throughout the facility. We, the, we knew upfront that the new software would communicate with a lot of the devices automatically, but there are other pieces of hardware that we had to find out if it would communicate with, and they, they learned that it will, which is a big deal for us. It's a, a good thing. So there will be a Phase Two after this. I, I'm just not sure what that cost is yet.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
It's interesting because I, I was at the jail facility. Mr. Gardner showed me the current software. And it looked about thirty years old. I'll know it's not, but it looked about thirty years old. So, yeah, there, there's a lot of work that has to be done, and all these sensors have to be installed and all the equipment to connect with the new software. So, because it has to know if it's moving air or heating or whatever. So, yeah, this is an expense that we cannot ignore. And let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the Harold Fish, Inc., HVAC Automated Control Software Replacement Agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item. Move, I'm not sure if it's approval or acceptance of the OSHA 300 report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Sensenstein?
Good morning, commissioners. This is, keeping on theme, this is an annual report that we submit annually and bring to you. In the past, I think it has gotten a signature, so. The, it's, so it's the OSHA report, and we submit that report to the Department of Labor each year. In the packet, there is the report that's been submitted already and information from our workers' compensation carrier that includes a trends analysis for the past, I think it's three years, four years, 2020 to 2023 through the end of 2023. And then also the list of injuries and amounts from '23.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I was surprised by the variation in the overall numbers from year to year. I mean, 2019 was down. Of course, we didn't have people in the office as much. But then, big spike for 2020, 2020, 2021, back down in 2022, and then up again, but not at quite as high in 2023. So any idea what?
I, I don't, yeah, I don't have any, I saw the same information, and I don't know. It just varies, you know, based on the things that are happening. And, you know, are the, probably the biggest areas that we see are highway and jail and sheriff because of their, the nature of those jobs. And so I think that those are usually pretty status quo, but if there's in, in some of the other departments, if things are happening there, you know, that are fluctuating, I, yeah, I don't know. I could certainly dig into that a little bit deeper. But it's the same, it's roughly the same from year to year, but like you said, those during COVID, it certainly went way down because there were less people in the office. Yeah.
No, I don't.
All right, any public comment on this item? We appreciate you putting this together in its very readable form, so appreciate that. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the OSHA 300 report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for being patient today. All right, next item.
Move approval of OSHA Surveying and Mapping LLC Agreement. Fund name: Section Corner Perpetuation. Fund number: 1202 in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I think it's live, okay.
Yes.
It's new.
It will come alive as you speak.
I know. I've been paying attention to it. My name looks like scribbles because I was trying to get it down before it was my turn to speak. So just a real quick back history. So we had a PS in the surveyor's office for about a little over three years. We actually created a part-time line so they could continue to work there in hopes that we had another PS come in to kind of cross-train him. Unfortunately, we weren't able to establish that. So as we were moving more towards a preservation approach with our perpetuation efforts, we had agreement like this, can't be the exact year that we submitted to the commissioners and that you approved, and we were able to get Ozer mapping in the surveyor's office to help us train on our Javod and other types of equipment and other types of drafting and maintenance routines. So since then, we were able to offer the job last year. And Mike Shepherd is our new PS in the surveyor's office, and he started in January. And so he is more used to working on a Sokea GPS receiver and Carlson CAD program. At the office, we have a Javod and we have Civil 3D. So this will allow Ms. Ozer to come in and start assisting Mr. Shepherd with kind of operating that equipment. So we don't believe we're going to actually hit that 10,000 mark, but we just wanted to give us a little buffer because we're going to do the training kind of as soon as possible, and then around the end of the year, have her come back in and just make sure that everything is kind of running smoothly. So that is the request in a nutshell with just a little bit of history why we're here today.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
With a few of the things, I thought you were speaking a different language here that you were talking about. But PS, is that professional surveyor?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the agreement with Ozer Surveying and Mapping LLC signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Next item, please.
Move approval of the 2024 Surveyor Review Board reappointments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Enver Randolph?
Thank you. Fire approval, and, yeah, this is just reappointing our three board members for this year. It's an annual appointment. Fairly routine. I, I will make a note that I went to the council just recently to increase their pay from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars a meeting. That comes out of the corner fund as well, which is a non-reverting dedicated fund, so very excited about that. Kind of followed the lead of the Drainage Board this year, so that's pretty awesome. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I wondered about this in years past as we worked on this, but it says that you're required to establish, locate, and reference at least five percent of the corners each year. So after twenty years, are you completely done with this, or do you just keep rotating back through? I mean?
I would invite you to come over so we can show you. Unfortunately, we got into a, a routine where we started to certify the same corners after every ten years. And so there's a lot of uncertainty in the county with our perpetuation efforts. But moving forward, since I moved into the office in 2016, we established a higher standard where we are actually tying those into boundary perpetuation surveys and also collecting geodetic controls. So our goal is to perpetuate the county. I hope, maybe in my lifetime, that it's a done deal. But with that, there, there, there could be different things that could have some disruption. So we're really sensitive of how we move this forward. And being able to tie that into a, a boundary perpetuation survey allows us to really push the line so we have clear understanding of what monuments we're holding. So in a nutshell, we're not done. And, but we're moving towards that goal, and what's really great is on our western line, we basically have most of that perpetuated with geodetic controls. I will be back here next week for some service agreements that will help us button up the west line while our new in-house PS will be working on the north line. And what's great is I've been promising kind of my, to ramp up the efforts here, and the goal is to, you know, surpass our quota of seventy-five corners per year. And we have a little over 2,100 out there, and half of them are known. But I say one-third of those are, have controls on them, so we still got a big task in front of us. Sorry if I
Complicated.
Expanded that too much. I do have it on, like, dashboards and stuff where we can filter out the data real quickly and you can really visualize our efforts. So if you'd like me to, I could bring that up for a, a department update here at one point, or you're welcome to come down, and we have a really nice layout to, you know, provide you a space to sit there, ask questions, and really get a good understanding of where our efforts have gone and where we're moving towards.
But now that you're over in your new space, so.
Yeah.
Comments, questions? All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on the team screen or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. And I will note that waiving provision D in Chapter 26, 216-2 Uniform Provisions for the residency requirement to reappoint Ms. Ozer to the Surveyor Review Board. So all those in favor of the 2024 Surveyor Review Board reappointment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Toshiba Single Copier Lease for Soil and Water Conservation Office. Fund name: Cumulative Capital. Fund number: 1138 in an amount of ninety-one dollars eighty-seven cents per month for a sixty-month contract. And then at the end, there is a one-dollar buyout.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I will note that there's also monthly print charges and other items as well that are included in this contract. Mr. Cron?
Good morning, everyone. Greg Cron, Technical Services Department. Later last summer, I'd met with Martha Miller out at Soil and Water to discuss her technology needs. And at that time, we realized that she was running a very old desktop color printer and as well as a contracted floor model copier that my office had paid for. The floor model copier, due to its limited paper size ability, wasn't really adequate for what Ms. Miller would like to try to accomplish out there. The color printer that she had on her desktop wasn't designed for high volume, and it comes with very expensive toner cartridges. At this time, that color copier, that color printer has now went defunct. It's not operating for. So what we're looking to do here is do this agreement with Toshiba. This is pretty standard with all our other Toshiba copiers. It will be added into that same group of support. But this is a sixty-month agreement with, for ninety-one eighty-seven a month, so that totals out to fifty-five hundred thirteen dollars and twenty cents on the lifetime of the lease at the end, or, excuse me, twelve dollars and twenty cents at the life of the lease with a dollar buyout at the end of that agreement. The copier, copy charges of color print and everything are standard for the state QPA's contract. It's also the same rate we pay for all our other copiers here at the county, both Toshiba and RICO. Ms. Miller's office, as do all the other county offices, will absorb that color print charge. My office absorbs the black and white charges. So even at a rate of three and a half cents per color copy, this will save Ms. Miller's office quite a bit on print costs for her color options. So we're looking to get that set up for, and I think it will help her office out quite a bit.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
I do want to thank Mr. Cron, though, for the back and forth that we've had because I couldn't understand why there was a dollar difference in the original amount.
All right, okay. Any public comments on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill.
Could I make a, a brief comment? In the agreement, it talks about bank qualifications, and once you initial somewhere, if it's bank-qualified. Essentially, what that means is if we do, if we anticipate to issue more than $10 million in debt, you don't initial it. If it's less than that, you do, and at this point, it's based upon when you make the agreement and the reasonableness of it. And I think at this point, I would say it's reasonable for that we would not expect to exceed that $10 million for this year. I just, I don't see the, I, I see the next big debt issuance that would put us over. That would be for the jail, and I don't think we're going to be anywhere near construction this year. So I think putting that on the record so you can initial that line, I think, is important.
All right, thank you.
And if I may add one more thing, the production model, the floor copier that they have, is still a viable machine. We bought that machine out of its contract last summer when we did the RICO 32 copier buyout. But it is still, for lack of a better term, a low-mileage machine. It is my intention to bring that back to the Technical Services Storage. We will redeploy that machine when we find a need for it within the county. So we will not be getting rid of that machine, but we also are not paying a monthly contract charge on that either.
Right, very good. Thank you so much. I already asked for a public comment, didn't I? Boy, this meeting's long. I believe I did.
You did.
Thank you.
I, I, I bought it in.
You were a public commenter. Thank you, Mr. Cockrell. Wow, all right. Not enough caffeine today. All right. With that, all those in favor of approving the Toshiba Single Copier Lease for Soil and Water Conservation Office signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Next item, please.
Move approval of the Effect TV, formerly Comcast, for Safe Place Program Outreach. Fund name: Runaway Homeless Youth Grant. Fund number: 8120. Fund Number: 8120. And an amount of $3,999.75.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you for your patience in waiting today. Uh, Youth Service Bureau, tell us all about it.
Yeah, good morning, Commissioners. Excuse me. I'm Sarah Jameson, I'm the Program Coordinator at YSB, and this is Jessica Brown, our new Safe Place, uh, Out, and YSB Outreach Manager. She actually came from the Health Department, so we've, uh, been great to have her with us. This is her first time, um, with us today at the Commissioners Meeting, so...
Welcome.
Uh, we are continuing a contract with Effect TV formerly known as Comcast, as we have in many years past. This contract allows us to run a 30-second commercial in our area to educate and promote Safe Place where youth can access help in a crisis. Commercials are aired on channels targeting families with youth. We have moved more towards an online campaign, which collects data on the effectiveness of the marketing. The total cost is $4,000 with $19.99 and 75 cents dedicated to traditional TV ads, and then the remainder $2,000 dedicated to streaming ads. Estimated number of impressions would be over 100,000 with a total investment of $3,999.75.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Um, I've emailed back and forth with Sarah and with Jessica, and I appreciate their, their patience with me. I'm, I'm concerned about Comcast's reach at this point with so many people cutting the, the cord, so to speak, and just doing streaming. Um, I looked at some of the channels that they are running the ads on, and I, in my house, I'm not on Comcast, uh, have those same channels, and I never see any of these ads, and I know that they run at times when they're youth things, but they said that they specifically target, uh, some of the sports stuff. And as an IU basketball fan, I, I watch some sports occasionally.
Women.
Yeah, especially the women. Yeah. Uh, but, um, so I am concerned about the actual reach, and I, I appreciate the fact that you shared the, the, uh, map that was in our, our packet and stuff as well, but, um, I guess I, I, I just want to make sure that we're reaching everybody because I think this is a really, really important program.
Sure. And, um, as we said in our email communication, our Deputy Director Vanessa was also responding. Um, this is just a small portion of our multifaceted marketing campaign, um, and this one specifically is, um, something that has been ran into our RHY Homeless Youth Grant that helps us, um, with this type of funding to be able to do reach out, um, and this is part of a three-year grant that is, is just now ending, and so we're going to be rewriting that grant, and we are looking at different ways to reach more streaming services and reach in different ways. Um, just right now, this is still part of our contract with the RHY grant to meet that recommendation, um, to have those TV impressions, but we are in, in, in agreement that, um, we need to start looking at other options, um, for streaming, uh, or how to reach more streaming services as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
This is just such an important program, and, uh, it would be important to reach as many people as possible, both to participate in it and also the kids who benefit from it. Thank you for keeping on top of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate you bringing this forward. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Effect TV Outreach for Safe Place Program signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Next item, please.
We have approval of Ordinance 2024-09, Amending Monroe County Code, Chapter 260, Courthouse and Grounds Rental.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Mr. Cockrell?
Yes, this was, uh, for the most part, approved on January 10th, just not in ordinance form, so this is just kind of putting that, the changes for the fees, uh, and the, changing the, uh, janitorial service area to event cleanup area. The one change from that is on the application for approval of use. Uh, the past policy said you had to give at least 30 days notice. I talked with the Commissioner's staff, and that rarely happens, so we basically changed it from have to to preferably at least 30 days, uh, 30 days prior. So, it's just changing to conform with how we've been operating.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Uh, such a beautiful jewel, uh, for the county to have this magnificent courthouse, so it's, it's great to have that protected and so others can enjoy it.
Well, and, you know, when we do things like paint the town purple, uh, at the end of the evening, everybody pitches in to help with the cleanup. It's just amazing, so it's not just our staff, it's how I think the residents appreciate this facility.
I think so, too. It's a good point. All right, see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, all those in favor approving Ordinance 2024-09 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. And, uh, the most patient presenter, word goes to Ms. Ridge. Um, Commissioner Giffens, if you'd make a motion, please.
I move approval of Ordinance 2024-08 to amend ordinances 89-01 and 86-09.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Ridge?
Believe our crowd didn't stay for this one.
They did not. We have...
It's riveting, it's riveting. What is this?
Yes.
Um, so these items went before our Traffic Commission Board in January. The 89-01 is to add no trucks at the Victor Pike, um, where it, from Rockport Road to the Victor Corey entrance. We've had some issues with, uh, semi-tractor trailers getting stuck in the, um, intersection, and I believe two weeks ago, it was stuck there for over and tied up traffic for over two hours. Um, then, uh, 8609, uh, this is kind of some cleanup work, uh, when we changed, uh, road names and then to, for the addition of the new road that will be coming. Um, it's to delete the 30 mile-per-hour location of, uh, speed limit from Curry Pike and Hunter Valley Road, uh, which is about a quarter mile east of State Road 46. And then we add 40 mile-per-hour from Hunter Valley Road, Woodyard Road to State Road 46, and 30 mile-per-hour from the Hunter Valley Road, State Road 46 to Arlington Road when it is completed.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. I don't have any questions either, um, except, um, I appreciate your patience and thank you. Uh, so with that, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill, although we know that's not going to happen. Um, all right. Uh, seeing none, all those in favor of Ordinance 2024-08 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three zero. Um, I do not believe we have any appointments today, do we? No. We are, um, onto announcements, we are, um, looking for applicants to serve on the Library Board, so, uh, and other boards and commissions, so go to co.munro.in.us and, um, look at all of the opportunities for, um, lending your expertise and wisdom to, uh, Monroe County Government, and, uh, apply, uh, as soon as you can. Um, there is still, um, free COVID testing available at the Health Department, uh, at 119 West 7th Street, and, um, also at the, uh, Monroe County Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive, where they also have vaccines available at Miller Drive. Um, the, uh, we continue to offer office hours, uh, each month for anyone who wishes to speak with one of us. Go to co.munro.in.us, look at the calendar, and choose, uh, a date and time that works for you and log in, and we're happy to hear from you. Uh, complaints, ideas, revelations, whatever you want to offer us, we are happy to hear it and have a discussion. Uh, the next, uh, blood drive, um, at Ivy Tech, uh, will be on Thursday, February 15th, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and Friday, February 16th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There is a blood shortage nationwide, so please give if you can. Uh, residents are encouraged to sign up for the County Alert Notification System at co.munro.in.us. In the middle of the screen, you will see the megaphone, click on it, and sign up for, uh, traffic, health, and, uh, weather-related in, emergency information. Um, we also want to note that something we talked about today during our, um, State of the County address is, uh, the Rural Housing Repair Program, um, intended for low and moderate, um, homeowners who are, um, uh, in owner-occupied homes in the county outside the city. Uh, we are providing assistance to help maintain those homes with things like roofing, carpentry, foundation work, windows, and other basic necessities. We ask that you contact your township trustee, um, to, uh, determine your eligibility, and for those residents of, uh, Monroe County in Perry Township outside the city of Bloomington, we ask that you contact the Commissioners Office directly, Commissioners Office at co.munro.in.us, and we will, uh, work with you to determine eligibility and process the paperwork. Uh, we are so grateful for everyone who, um, stayed for, um, all of our, um, points today, um, the Board of Finance meeting, our State of the County address. Uh, we appreciate, um, everyone and look forward to a great year ahead. Uh, anything else for the good of the order?
Yes. Um, if you don't mind, I'd like to just, um, ex, um, remind people who are reaching out to the Commissioners Office email regarding the rural repair to please put ARPA Rural Repair in the subject line, because otherwise, um, I'm afraid your email can be lost, so please put, um, as long as you get the words rural repair in that subject line, we'll find it. Thanks.
Good. Thank you for that. All right, and it appears we do have an item on our work session. Um, can we come back at 12:10? Yes? Okay, great. We will come back at 12:10 for our work session. Um, our next meeting is, uh, uh, February 6th, uh, at 10:00 AM right here in the Nat U Hill Room. Thank you so much.[1731.71]